Welcome. Welcome to the Joint Board meeting. We are going to start the meeting and we're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you can please rise and join me.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna start with just introductions. If folks on the board can introduce themselves as well as anyone that is part of the SAU administration. So my name is Patrick O'Day. I'm the Chair of the Joint Board and also a member of the Exeter School Board.
Bill Goethe, Chair of Exeter Regional Cooperative School Board from Exeter.
Neil Blake, I'm on the Co-op Board from Exeter.
Don Bolins, Co-op Board, Exeter.
Tim Reed, Exeter School District.
Heather Eichmeyer, Chair of the Exeter School Board.
Wendy Larson, Kensington Elementary School Board.
Cheryl McDonough, Kensington Elementary.
Megan Fitzgerald, Brentwood Elementary.
Dan Abear, Brentwood.
Brian Duffy, Chair of the Brentwood School Board and Brentwood Rep to the Co-op Board.
Allison Higgins, Brentwood Board.
Cameron Orr, Stratum School Board.
Sophie Salt and Stahl, Stratum.
Eric Herring, Stratum.
Bobby Kelly, Chair of the Newfields Board.
Jane Walsh, Newfields.
Brian Belanger, Newfields.
Kirsten Soroko, East Kingston.
Paul Doyle, East Kingston.
Tammy Guns, the Co-op Board, Stratum.
Melissa Lyons, East Kingston Representative on the Co-op and the Vice Chair.
Hi, Esther Asbell, Superintendent here in SAU 16.
Hi, I'm Arla Sulev, I'm the Chief Officer.
Renee Bennett, Superintendent in charge of Student Services.
Hi, everybody. Jill Lysier, Chief Officer of Curriculum Instruction and Flexibility. Nice to see you.
Good evening, I'm Heather Murray, I'm the Human Resource Director.
Good evening, Chris Anderson, the Associate Superintendent.
Molly O'Keefe, Director of Finance.
Good evening, Jill Lysier, Assistant Director of Finance.
Hi there, Ellen Rizga, Assistant Director of Students here.
Okay, that sounds good. All right, so next up on our agenda, we have time set aside for public input. We always provide at least 30 minutes for public input. Are there folks that, let me get a sense, because I know there's a bunch of people that are here, I'm getting a sense that a bunch of people may want to provide public input, which is great. How many people would like to provide public input? Can just, can I just see a raise, show of hands? That's fine. So we have like six or seven or maybe eight people. That's fine. So our policy says that you have up to three minutes, okay, to speak. We can, if there are going to be more people, we might have needed to either give more than 30 minutes or reduce the amount of time, but we don't need to. You have at least three, you have three minutes to speak, so whoever'd like to come forward, please come forward and share whatever you'd like to share.
I'll take it off.
So if you can, if you can start, just introduce yourself and say what town you're from would be helpful.
Yeah, I'm Brian Keane, I'm from Brentwood, and I have two kids in our school system. One is at Swayze and one is at CMS. I'm here tonight to talk about the potential changing of the grading system at CMS. I'm not in favor of changing CMS's grading system, and I don't need three minutes. I brought someone here who's going to tell us a much better reason why we should not change the grading system at CMS. I'd like to introduce my son, Brady Keane. He's got three minutes now. Do you want to stand up?
If you're done, so if you want to say, you certainly can share the time or he can also have three minutes, absolutely.
In the paper.
Yep.
Hello, my name is Brady Keane, I am a sixth grader at CMS. With the CMS grading system in all of my classes, I know exactly where I stand in my class. Whereas when I was at Swayze in elementary school, I either got a proficient or a developing. A proficient and developing is a very broad category, whereas at CMS, we're older so we can grasp, I would say, more grades. It also, for me, when I got a 70 in my class, I knew I needed to step it up just a little bit and I would meet the standard at an 80 or 85. Whereas I got a 40 in summative, I knew I really needed to work on that skill and I needed to put in a little extra time and make sure I focused more on that subject in class. Whereas in Swayze, you could be one point away from a proficient or you could just be barely holding on to that proficient. Whereas at CMS, you're either at an 85, an AC, which is a 93, or an E, which is a 100. Those three grades, you can place yourself, not really to other people, but in your own mind. You can set your own goals for yourself. When you're at Swayze and you get a developing, I used to just brush it off and say, okay, that's okay, I'll try again. Whereas at CMS, my grades have started to matter more because I've been looking at them every other day. This has been motivating me to create a, I would say, better environment for myself to learn and push myself to get my grades up. When I'm able to see how much I stand, when I get a lower grade, if I get like a 55, I know, okay, I have to step it up. 40, I have to step it up. Whereas if I get a 70, I get a little bit, I get, I'm happy with myself. I know that I'm close enough to meeting the standard where I have to push a little more.
Thank you.
He's taken more ownership in his grades now that he knows where he stands, and this grading system has worked really well for him. I would hate to see it go away. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm Anna Higgins, and I'm a freshman in high school.
Say what, Anna, say what town you're from, also.
I'm from Brentwood. I have gone through all three grading systems in elementary school, middle school, and high school now. And back when I was in fourth grade, we still had like the traditional letter grades. And I remember one day I sat down at the counter with my mom and showed her my math test, and I had gotten a B, and I wasn't quite sure what that meant, so I asked her what, like what that meant. And she was like, that's a good grade, but like there's room to do better. And I think personally that the elementary school grading being implemented in the middle school never gives students a chance before high school to know what grades truly are and like what, how to be motivated. And I've heard from so many students, upperclassmen and college students, that they wish that their freshman year had gone, like their grades had gone better. And there's so many challenging things about being a freshman because you can't, like it's just so much adjustment. Adding, like not knowing how to motivate yourself or what truly is a good grade or how to like succeed in school before your freshman year can really tank your grades and really sets students up for not being accepted into college, which I think is really a bigger problem than like students not necessarily getting their feelings hurt or something about the grades, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Ryan Higgins, and I'm a sixth grader at CMS, and I'm from Brentwood. I like the grading system that we're currently using because it motivates me to do better. If I get a bad score on a test, I can understand what I need to do better and what I've gotten good at. If I got a meets on a test, I could see like how I need to improve. It's like much more transparent than the system used by the elementary schools because I can use what I get on my score to figure out exactly like how well I'm doing in my classes. This is very important to me because grades are something that I take pretty seriously and I need to like try to get the best I can. I like having a way of really understanding what I like, what my grades are like, instead of just getting a grade and understanding it. And I think that the grading system as proposed in the middle school and is currently like being used in the elementary schools is not great. Most of the grades practically anywhere from a meets, an R thing, to a E, which is 100, is qualified as a P or proficient. This grading system doesn't let anyone really know how they've done on a test or assignment. A proficient is basically the highest grade you can get besides an extended learning, which you don't really get a whole lot on tests. The highest you can get is such a broad range of points, students will have no way of knowing how they're, if they're doing the best they can on an assignment. In elementary school, I didn't understand my report card whatsoever, and it didn't have any meaning to me because I pretty much already knew what every single one of my grades would be. The only thing that I looked at to judge my learning was the teacher write-up. They individually wrote a big explanation of what the students had been excelling and having trouble in. In a school like CMS with almost 1,000 students, it's, will be hard for the teachers to do that, too. I think that pretty much sums up why it should stay the same it is. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sean Higgins, I'm from Brentwood, and I'm currently a sixth grader at CMS. I think that the current grading system used at CMS has a lot of benefits for kids. I know a lot of people, including myself, that struggled adapting to the grades at CMS because like when I got a proficient on everything in elementary school, I didn't really have to like push myself that hard, but then when I got to all the grades at CMS, it's like a lot harder and like you have to see where you are better and push yourself harder. And it motivates me to get like a higher grade, whereas like a P on everything, I couldn't really get higher. So like if I get like an M or an AC, I can push myself higher and get a better grade. My report cards in elementary school didn't like mean anything to me because I just saw Ps and more Ps. I just looked at the teacher writing about me and it would be really hard for every teacher to write 80 or so paragraphs about how each individual kid was doing. I do not think that it will benefit kids to keep the elementary school grading system going into CMS. It will also be hard for next year's seventh and eighth graders to go from what they have now at CMS to a new one.
Eric Kelly, I'm from Brentwood. I don't know how I'm gonna follow the kids. I guess what I would have to say is I have a sixth grader at CMS, I have a freshman here at HS. So we parented through the change in the grading system at the elementary school. And I would say my general takeaway from that was that it involved a lot of education and outreach to the parents, staff, administrators, and everyone to understand that we were going from one kind of doing one thing to another. And I'd honestly say, based on watching both my kids go through that, I think that was a process that continued year after year. It was not straightforward. So for the Co-op Board to be considering a C change in grading at CMS, I think that requires a high level of transparency and education and outreach to the parents because we've already gone through it to some degree and kind of muddled our way through it, to be honest. And I think moving that to CMS as things start going up, as Anna pointed out with the high school, I think you need to seriously consider that and solicit feedback. This should not be something that should just be undertaken because, hey, it's something we're doing at the elementary level. It really doesn't necessarily have an exact place at CMS. Maybe it does, but that needs to be thought, a very thoughtful process and engagement with staff, administration of the elementary schools who've gone through the process, as well as the parents. I think my kids are both very different academically. They have different strengths, different weaknesses, and the idea that we would lose some of that ability to quantify their achievements and also where they need areas for improvement by going to a, more of a pass/fail, more qualitative system, I think would actually, for certain kids, I think that could be really detrimental. That's just what I want to say. Thanks. Would anyone else like to give public input? It's not, just, just to be clear, there's, you can, you can give public input about anything. It doesn't have to be about the same topic. It could be the same topic, it could be different.
Just whatever's on my mind.
Yeah, absolutely. You're upset about the weather, you want to chat about that, you can let us know.
Katie Adams, I'm from Exeter. I just, I wanted to circle back to something that was subject of the last meeting about signing on to the DEI pledge of loyalty or whatever from the state. I was disappointed in the board's decision, but more so, though I understood the legal ramifications, I think it presented a real challenge to parents and therefore kids to understand the reasoning behind it, given that they had to go into closed session. And I guess two things I'm hoping for going forward. One is that the board either publicly or privately think about where the line is going to be, where we may have to forego funding if we are pushed to betray our students or betray our values. Where is that line? How are we gonna know when we've reached it? Because I think it's unlikely that this is the last time we'll be asked to make this decision. And another thing I would ask the board to consider is whether there's going to be an opportunity where we could be in some kind of dialogue with you all in the community. Because though I appreciate the opportunity to get up and just tell you how I feel, it would be great if we could have some back and forth that is a little more candid about, this is what we're thinking about this, these are our concerns, and some informal community conversation about it. Because I think we are kind of all on the same team here, and we want to support you as well as give our feedback, and I think that would be a helpful way to kind of come together. That's all.
Okay. Are there folks that'd like to give public input?
Thank you.
You're not banished if you don't want to, just to be clear. But thank you for coming.
We're fine.
So, so we leave public input open for half an hour, so if there, if, you know, at a minimum. And so if there are other folks that come in later and want to provide public input, you know, just try to get our attention and we can sort of stop the process and do that. Okay? Any board discussion related to the public input?
It was not my idea that my kids came. They found out that a friend was coming and thought that they should too, so I will just say that, that it, well, it looks like maybe I roped them all into it. I hadn't. But I do feel super passionately and, you know, this is a conversation I've had with a lot of you for a lot of years. And I, I'll save my public comment because it's like four pages long and I'll just send it to you in an email. But I really would consider, I did have a really great conversation with Principal Baristo today, and, well, he didn't change my mind on how I feel about it. I think that, you know, at the end of our conversation, you know, it was super clear that we both actually want the same thing. It's just that we want it done in a different way. And I would say, and this is in what I will email to the Co-op Board, like the thing that I said to him that I think probably made him understand the best, what my, besides this sort of transparency and motivation issue, is that, like, the way that the competency-based reporting system works at elementary school is super hard to understand. It's not, it's, it's not user-friendly. And in healthcare, which is sort of my field, there's a concept of health literacy. And I'm sure that Dr. Kelly and Dr. Bonifidi could, you know, add to this, but, you know, they're highly trained technical experts, and they could talk to their patients in highly technical jargon. And their patients would not understand what was being asked of them, you know? They could, they could take something as easy as you have high blood pressure and you should change your diet, and they could make it really technical. And they don't. They're trained not to do that. They're trained to be, to, you know, to ensure health literacy of their patients. And I think that, that is like the best analogy for me of the competency-based reporting system, that it's highly technical educator speak. And it's not super user-friendly to the average parent. And I would qualify myself as not the average parent because I am an educator and I do teach based on competencies, and I still find it difficult. So I think that, you know, we're taking, we're losing a huge percentage of our families by, by having it really highly technical. So anyways, I, Bill and I had this, very briefly, had this conversation last week, and I know that the current conversation is about CMS, but, you know, Bill's comment to me, which I have sort of sat on all week, is, you know, is this a district conversation, not just a CMS conversation? Because the reality is that this reporting system already sits in all of our elementary schools, and I already know as a Swayze board member that my, you know, that there's lots of parents that are not happy with it. So I think it is perhaps a wider conversation than just the Co-op Board, but the Co-op Board, I think, has the more immediate, like sort of decision-making, so.
Sophie, go ahead.
I have a different, change in topic. Do you too, Heather?
Yes.
Do you want to go first, or?
No, you go first.
Rock, paper, scissors?
No, you go first.
So Sophie Salt and Stahl, Stratum Board. I've been thinking a lot since the last joint board meeting, and I wasn't there that night. board meeting, and I wasn't there that night because I was sick, unfortunately, but I kind of got a recap of what went down. And I agree with the public comment that, like, having to make those decisions in the moment is a lot. And so I would be really interested in thinking through as a joint board, how can we be more thoughtful about those decisions and have more time to process what's going on? And then if there is a line, like, how can we have, like, be really thoughtful about those conversations and think strategically? And all, and through all of the implications that are really complicated, legal, financial, morals, values, like, all of those things are in play. And to ask us to make a decision without very much information and community input in, you know, half an hour is really confusing and daunting. So I'm proposing some form of, yeah, some, some group that could be comprised of joint board members, could be public, could be other staff and SLT members, Ireland in particular, to really help us think through those issues and what is coming down the pike and how to be thoughtful about it. So whether that's, yeah, we can talk about the mechanism. I don't know if I should pause there and just get other thoughts about it, but I do have a proposal for a mechanism, so.
Okay. Go ahead. Are you-
I just wanted, can I-
You adding to that?
Well, I just, yes, briefly, I will say, I just, this is Heather Ikmeier from Exeter School Board. I just also want to just name, I was also not at the joint school board meeting when it was discussed. I understand why it went into non-public. But I, I agree with the public comment around how do we, I guess, hold our values, which are supposed to be guiding our decision-making? How do we get really clear about that line, which I think Katie so accurately named in the comment, around where we have crossed the line and we're actually betraying our core values? I was really struck by the work that came out of the Strategic Planning Summit. There were five core values named by the community, a community that includes parents, but also faculty and staff and board members. I mean, there was quite a few people who attended that. And two of the values of the five, one is equity, cultivating an inclusive and supportive community that celebrates diversity, ensures access, and provides the support each individual needs to thrive. And the fifth, and the, the second of the five values is belonging and connection, building a culture of belonging through inclusive relationships, open communication, and meaningful collaboration. So these are values that were named by our community, are sort of, of many diverse voices. And so, which was really, I think, emboldening and inspiring to me to see that, that those values, even in this current environment, are ones that we want to uplift and uphold. And to me, core values are what should be defining and just, you know, helping us guide our decision-making. So I, I don't know what your proposal is, Sophie, but I am curious about how we are proactive about having, you know, when these decisions, I agree that this will probably come up again in some form or fashion. And in our role as sort of guiding policy for SU-16 and thinking about budgeting, and how can we just have a few other ways of responding in preparation if things do get called into, if our values are, if we're, if we're being asked to cross a line with our core values? So I'd be really open to that conversation at some point. And I agree that although I wasn't there, just having some more education as a joint school board around sort of how to navigate those situations would be helpful so that we're not put on the spot in such a short turnaround. And I really respect that you also were on the spot as well.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd just like to say something. I appreciate that you, everything that you're saying. And we do have to be thoughtful going forward. And I was in that room that night. The conversation was very thoughtful. The core values were stated over and over again. We were all, we, we struggled with this, but the outcome was very clear. It was very thoughtful. Esther brought in a lawyer, so the lawyer could tee it up for us. So given the timeline of what we had coming at us, we, I think we acted very appropriately, and I'm proud of the work that we did. So I just want to make sure that we're, I'm understood there.
Other thoughts? People want to, have thoughts relative to public input or things that were just shared by board members?
I, sorry.
Go ahead.
I just, I wanted, I wanted to, one, I want to applaud those kids. I'm gonna say that aloud. I, I think them standing up for what they believe in, in articulating how they did it was, was regardless of how the board decides to act, is pretty impressive. So that's one. Two, I, I want to follow up on Bill's comment on the thoughtfulness. I think, I'm gonna ask a question again to make sure that I'm hearing this correctly. One of the things, questions that went to the floor that night was, are we-
Can I interview him for just a minute? I was not at the last board meeting, but to the extent, I just want to caution board members to, since something was discussed in non-public, we'd be careful that we don't end up talking about anything substantively about a non-public conversation.
Sure.
That's why I'd say non-public in the first place.
I just wanted, everything that we spoke about, I feel like Esther made it clear that we were in compliance to what needed to happen. And I think that is aligned to the core values of what the strategic plan said. And so I feel like it's really important that we are sticking to those core values, but also maintaining what we need, the integrity of how we need to fiscally operate in this, sorry, in this budget.
Other comments?
So I, I like what you're saying. I think that I agree that, you know, I think I was at last meeting about the, you know, the decision we're making because the, we have definitely took into account the core values of inclusiveness and also the core values of educating our kids and what we would have to do, you know, and, and the money factor of that. It was certainly not an easy decision. But I also really like the idea of forward thinking and saying, okay, now, we've crossed this bridge, right? We, this is what it is. Right now, there's an injunction where we, we've kind of like, whew, okay, don't have to do much with that. But thinking forward to the next step, making sure that we can have a conversation, I think is really difficult for people to come in and they can stand up. And then we kind of talk around them without talking to them. And then, you know, so having some forum where people can, can put forward their ideas, I think, is a really good idea. That's one thing. The second thing is towards the, the grading system. I've never been a fan of the elementary grading system. I think the two things, one, thinking of it as a pass/fail system is, is, is a great way to think of it. I've never thought of it that way before, but that is what it is. It's you pass or you fail and, you know, and then sometimes you somehow get this amazing extended learning thing, which you don't know even what that, how your kid gets that or, you know, why they get it. And, but I think even better explanation was what you're talking about with doctor speak or what I always talk to my patients about mechanic speak, right? It's a part of a brain I don't, have never learned. So like when my mechanic tells me that something's broken on my car, I don't know. Same thing, you know, I'm sure there's a lot that goes into the grading system. And I, and I think we just need to maybe figure out a way that that can be explained to the layman.
Other thoughts?
I just want to make a quick comment about the, the decision that was made. And I think it, I think it was the right decision for that. I, I voted no, but I think it was the right decision for that particular issue. But the feedback I received is the slippery slope kind of aspect of this. And I know everybody's aware, but I think people don't understand the nuance of the conversation that we had. So the way I think it played out in public was every comment was about not signing that thing, and then the board overwhelmingly voted to sign it, right? So I'm not saying that the public should decide that without being part of that internal discussion, but I think as far as having a forum or some sort of feedback, I think folks feel like, you know, hey, I come up and say something and then you guys move on. So I just think that's how that one played out. And I think the next one might be more difficult because we didn't, you know, we had kind of the backstop on that one of the legal case and all that. So I, I just want to say in support of the, of some sort of forum to discuss with the public.
I, I wanted to comment on basically that last part of what you said, and that I, I really do like the idea of Sophie's suggestion. I'm often a, sort of a practical, I'll think about how we're gonna practically do that. So is, sometimes with board structure and governance, having certain formal committees and meetings can be pretty complicated, right? Because there needs to be postings and certain numbers of people and minutes and all that. And so I guess, Patrick, I would ask if, what is a mechanism to bring about exactly what Sophie is suggesting? And I think, I know that I would be agreeable and interested in, in being a part of. But I don't know, is the only way that that could result in being a committee? It doesn't have to be a big, complicated, you know, three-day forum? Like, I mean, we've done some great things to collect information from the public. But I also think that there's value in just having like a coffee chat or, you know, something like that person was sort of suggesting. But I know that there are rules about how to do that. So I don't know if you or anybody in this group knows about a practical way to have that conversation and/or a meeting that occurs every so often, or if you would recommend it being something formal so that it could be posted and attended to by folks. I just want a suggestion like that, that I think is a valuable one, to sort of be left for next, you know, academic year.
So I think once everyone had a chance to talk, I think we're gonna circle back to Sophie. I think she had an idea. She wanted to have her a chance to say that instead of my suggesting other possibilities. And people can respond to that and react to that. But I don't think we've left that off the table or not passing by it. You know, one of the things, I mean, I'll just say briefly, one of the things about public input, I understand how it can be frustrating to some extent because it's not always, it's often not a dialogue with the public per se. I think it's helpful if the board has an interest in talking about something that's going on in the public, that we try to do that. And for the most part, we do our business in public so that people can hear it and participate in it. And there's not as much of a back and forth with members of the public in, in this particular forum, but there are other forums like committees, or sometimes there are public, I don't, I'm not gonna start giving examples of how to do this necessarily, but I could. But why, I think we should hear what Sophie is gonna propose. But again, before we, Sophie, just to hold on for a second, I do want to just respect that we're not just one or two people on this board. If there are other people that have comments they want to make, I want to give other people an opportunity to, to speak, and then I'll give Sophie another chance to speak, and we can kind of go from there. Does anyone else have a comment they'd like to make about anything related to public input or otherwise? Yes?
So, we're going back and forth on two different subjects.
Yeah, we are.
As far as the grading goes, it was my understanding when we voted that we were trying to make the middle school more like the high school so that the transition would be easier. And yet, what I heard from public input tonight was that we were making middle school more like the elementary school. And I, I'm, maybe I don't understand, but they let, they had their comments and then they left, and we didn't really address whether what they were saying was right or not.
Can you speak to that? I'm not sure whether we should save this for tomorrow for the co-op board, because that's really the board that deals with this issue. And certainly, the principal that Allison met with, Drew, will be prepared, and I know Jill's prepared, to speak to some of those concerns. But just very briefly, the issue about coming to the high school is the high school has an 80/20 split with summative and formative as far as grading. The middle school had 100% only, so it upped the ante, so to speak, around grades for middle schoolers. We went in aligned with the high school. So that's the alignment with the high school. The, the middle school has had non-letter grading, A, B, C, D, if you will, and for quite a while on the actual report card. And so in Alma, which is what the kids were talking about, they have to have a number grade right now. And I have to get clarification from Drew, is that still gonna exist next year or not? Because in Alma, you had to put a number grade, and I don't know where that's moving forward. It may still going to be that way. But the actual report card at middle school has had, had a five-point scale, not ABC, but Ms. and Ps, just like it does. So all we did was take it to a four-point letter scale from a five-point letter scale, which aligns with the rubric that the high school uses when grading assignments. So that's the alignment with the high school. So your corrections in that. I would recommend that we continue this particular discussion at the co-op board tomorrow night because it doesn't really impact the full decision-making, this isn't the decision-making body for that. But I'm happy to defer to whatever else people want to do. But that would make sense to me.
Yeah. And I, I was reflecting on Allison's comment too, where I think you had, you had said that you thought about, is this a conversation for the co-op? Because that's the group that has the authority in making decisions about grading at the co-op and high school level. We don't have that authority as a joint board. But I think you were also wondering aloud whether or not there's a broader question about just grading in the district, which is why you wanted to provide comment about it.
Right. And, and I, be super clear, like, I, I am a huge proponent of the 2080 split, right? Which is in alignment with the high school. Like, right now, middle school doesn't get, their grades don't consist of formatives, right? They are 100% summatives. And I think that formatives are an important part of the learning cycle, and moving that component to match the high school, I think, is great. The current proposal that the co-op board was given last week or whenever, does propose that the percentage go away. It's clearly written in the slide deck that the percentage goes away. And that's one of the conversations that Mr. Baristo and I had today, is if the percentage stays, does that make it feel better? And, you know, the answer to me is, yeah, it does make it feel better. If the percentage stays, it makes it feel better because it gives me the tools to know whether my kid got a 70, or an 80, or a 90, or 100. Like, they're still gonna put a P there, and that P might not be meaningful to me, but the percentage gives me the tools that my kids and I both need and want. So, you know, that is one of the conversations we had today. But I'll send, you know, I have a lot of detail that I'll send to the co-op board. I would ask that you do read it.
Let me go back to Sophie. You were going to, you sort of-
Yes, I would love to hear from Jill and the comment that she'd like to make about this.
Just wanted, just wanted to clarify one thing. The students that came up were so articulate and wonderful, and I loved hearing from them. Just one difference from the elementary school to the middle school that is staying the same, and I don't want people to think that's leaving, and I think is that transparency that we want, is in Alma, you have your assignments, and they're attached to competencies, and students can see their gradebook in middle school ongoing, and so can families. And that's not going away. And so when we heard the message a couple time that, a couple times that we're going back to the elementary school grading for the middle school, that's, that's not accurate. And that transparency piece, that is still happening. So you'll still have access to the gradebook, you'll still have access to the assignments, you still have access to their alignment to the competencies. It is, as Dr. Azbell shared, the five-level rubric to the four. So, thanks.
Okay. Maybe to stop ping-ponging, can we just wrap up that conversation then so that we can then focus? So just to wrap up, I guess, the grading thing, is that gonna be deferred to the decision-making body for that conversation, which is-
I haven't heard anyone make any proposal to do anything about the grading. So unless someone makes a proposal, then we're just having a discussion. So if someone is making a proposal, we can act on that proposal or motion. But otherwise, we're having a discussion. So there's nothing to wrap up for-
I guess, are we the ones that are, make the decision about that, though?
Well, we, we don't have authority to make decision about the, about CMS grading. If there's a proposal to do something relative to district-wide grading, I haven't heard anything for that. But if there's something, then someone needs to bring that forward and say what that would be.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
This board wouldn't have that purview either. That would be individual districts. So this board, as a joint board, doesn't have the authority to make other boards in other districts do something. So anything to do with grading is at a local board level.
Yeah. I wasn't proposing, like, what I asked Mr. Baristo today was to bring the conversation back and engage stakeholders. Like, that's what I'm asking. Like, I'm not asking to vote no or for. I just asked for that conversation to continue and for it to be broader with broader stakeholders was, was my request. And I think that personally, like, if that doesn't happen, I will ask the Brentwood Board to, to put it on our agenda. But that's not, that's neither here nor there. That, that's not part of the request.
Yeah? I do just want to acknowledge, and I appreciate that we're even having this conversation. I have a middle schooler. I think I'm a pretty active and engaged parent. I didn't know about this proposed change. I actually don't, I'm not entirely thrilled about what I have heard about it, although I'm curious. I might try to attend tomorrow's co-op board meeting. So I think it's just very helpful. Thank you to the, the parents and the kiddos who made a great presentation and for us just having this discussion. So I appreciate it. Sure.
This is a great plug for you to go to the, if anyone out in watching land would like to know what that conversation was and what that presentation was. It's posted, the full presentation on the webpage for that joint, for that co-op board meeting. So if you don't, can't come tomorrow or you're just wondering, that's the place to access that information for all of you as well as anyone else that's listening and might have questions. Or if you're approached, that's a place where you also could direct folks to see the presentation and be informed that way if you have questions about it.
I guess I'll just say generally too, from, from my perspective, I think it's okay that we discuss things and it doesn't have to lead to an action item. That there was, there was some public concern. We, board members had an interest in reflecting on that concern, even though we, there's, there's no action item at the end for us per se, it's fine to spend a little bit of time to reflect on that. So back to you, Sophie.
Just quickly, before we close this out, just for my own, because I also hadn't heard of the, did the co-op board already vote on this? You already voted on it?
All right. Any other grading comments? Okay. My proposal is to form a committee. The title of the committee would be the North Star Committee because I feel like we need a guiding North Star to help us in some of the chaos. And the mission is to protect the strength of the SAU 16 public school system and its values while being financially responsible to taxpayers. That would be the mission of committee I'm proposing. The committee would be comprised of joint board members and then also SLT members, in particular, I think Arlen and Chris, and then Molly for financial implications and getting legal support when we need legal support. And I would definitely be open to members of the public. Parents, I think, would have a really good input, maybe students also. So we could kind of figure out what would make sense and how to limit maybe the number of them or how to go about doing that, standing up that committee if it's something that's a regular thing that we meet every Thursday, or maybe it's something where we meet once and kind of establish some ground rules and then just meet on an as-needed basis. All of that, I think, is up for discussion, but I'll just pause there with my proposal for other questions, input, and clarifications.
So I'm going to take that as a motion. Are you making a motion? Okay, do we have a second for the motion? You don't have to repeat that back to make a second.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, so is there discussion on the motion? Go ahead.
I have a question. So in my view, our core values run through all the committees that we have, right? Superintendent Evaluation, Policy, you know, all the, so can you just clarify how, what the sort of, how we hold that throughout the existing committees and how this commit, what the sort of charge of this committee would be as in complement to that or different?
Yeah, I think the charge of this committee would be specifically about policies or mandates that are coming down the pipeline that would change or have dramatic financial implications for us and for the whole SAU 16 that would need a more thoughtful discussion than a 30-minute conversation. And maybe some creative thinking outside the box that we don't have the capacity or voices in the room to have those solutions present. And then that committee could make a proposal or a recommendation to the full joint board if there are substantial, you know, implications for the SAU 16, certainly financial. You know, I don't think that one committee could, would be appropriate to make a decision for, you know, like, losing $5 million. That's not what I'm proposing. But rather some, a committee that could come together if something like that is on the table again and say like, okay, this is what's happening. What are our options? How can we think creatively? What are the financial implications of this? What are, yeah, what are some proposals that we might be able to have as a full community instead of just the folks that are in this room and limiting us to those perspectives?
Yes.
I'm just like trying to think through what is real and what I'm thinking this might be, but didn't we talk about a legislative committee?
Right.
Like, wouldn't that, I feel like that this kind of is a legislative committee. So if we were already going to do that, maybe that committee could function and just go beyond like the state and just broaden to look at executive actions as legislation?
Okay.
Megan, I was just going to say something to that same effect because Sophie, when you were talking about it being a space to discuss policies, et cetera, I wanted to ask, were you envisioning it to be like external policies that are sort of, that we are beholden to because they're being directed to us from external? Because if that is a large part of what you're envisioning, I agree with Megan in that it, if it's not the same committee, there's a lot of overlap, I guess. So I would just want to make sure.
Yeah, no, I never was, I wasn't aware of that committee, so I think that could be a place for it if it could broaden its scope to include what I'm talking about too. And this wouldn't be the same as the policy committee, which is its own thing and that maybe there would be overlap also, but maybe communication between them.
Can we have a motion, a second? We have some comments. Are there additional comments about the motion? Or we're still in discussion, so.
How would, how do membership, how is membership in the committee determined and, I mean, how does that work? Like, the actual logistics, like, how would you, how would you plan on organizing this?
So glad you asked. Do you have a proposal? I'm just kidding.
No, but like, I think your goal is worthy. To enhance discussion, I think that's a good idea.
How, what are the, what's the mechanism, you mean? Or what, I guess?
You're forming a committee?
Yeah.
Who's on the committee and how are they chosen?
Yeah. I think my proposal would be to have just self-selected from every board, could have one to two members. And then, as I mentioned, some members of SLT who are, would be appropriate to be on the committee also. And then I don't know about broader members of the public. I think maybe that committee, once that core is formed, could have that conversation and decide who else would be appropriate to be on that or how to receive public input or how to have a conversation. It's definitely, yeah, it's tricky. Allison, do you have?
Let me, let me distract people. I want to make sure I give everyone a chance to talk and, so go ahead, Allison.
So I do really love the idea of the legislative committee. I think that's actually something that's super needed. And I think that what I hear, and maybe I'm not understanding correctly, but the idea of like a guiding star committee seems like an executive committee to me. And I don't love that idea. Like, I feel as though that we all were voted and should all be the guiding star, like, that, that when there's like challenging conversations around what's happening in the greater world, like, that we should all have a role in that conversation. I don't love the idea of there being sort of that like a superpower committee over the sort of joint board, personally. I love the idea, like, I love the idea that we are proactively looking at legislation that's coming and, you know, processing it. And I am super supportive of having a forum to engage the general public in those conversations. I just am not supportive of.
I just want to make sure you understood that.
I need you to hold off.
Okay.
I just need to give everyone, make sure everyone has a chance to talk, so, go ahead.
The only thing I'm thinking is, I don't think that committee would have helped us last night because that decision had been made in just days. So there was, it's a great idea about the committee, but that would have prevented what we were blackmailed and extorted to do so that we would have the money to go into next year. Nobody, well, very few of us felt good about signing that, but I think we just couldn't give away that money. So that wouldn't have prevented that though because that was exigent circumstances.
And I'm not sure, it's not going to be the last time that we're given very little time. We're threading very thin needle here a lot.
I would just say the fact that that's not going to be the last time is probably, to me, is the point, right? That what we're, what we were, is probably not going to be the last hand is time, is to be sort of, sort of bullied into signing something with the, you know, caveat that if you don't, you'll be, you know, financially penalized, right? So I guess the question would be is how do we start to be proactive about if we are faced with a similar executive order of that kind, right? I would imagine, and I'm not sure this is exactly what you had in mind, but that committee, whether it's the same or different, could meet with Arlen and others to understand better what are other districts doing to, to be proactive, to understand sort of, I mean, we are definitely not the only community that is facing, you know, these kinds of actions. So if, if that, just to those points, if, if we imagine that this might be just the first of many circumstances that have a tight turnaround or not, I guess what I'm hearing is how do we think forward into if we are put in that, a similar position, might not be the exact, how might we, what are our options? And how do we research those options or think forward creatively about those options so that when we do present them to the board and before we go into, you know, maybe non-public, that we can really understand what options are available to us? And it's not, I don't think that's going to cover all circumstances, but I guess that's, that was my feeling is that, and again, I was not here, but just understanding the situation, just, I, you know, even the Exeter School Board, I think, you know, Patrick, you raised, and even our last board meeting, you know, how might we have, you know, develop a, another draft of a budget that if we are, if our values are called into question, that we can, can think about other ways of, of funding our, our work, our students and our programs? So I, I think that your comment is, to me, like, what is resonating for what Sophie is sharing is that just how do we not be in a reactive mode going forward if this isn't the first, the only, the last time that we're presented with this situation?
Other people that want to speak to the motion, particularly people that haven't spoken first, I'll give other people a chance to speak again. Go ahead.
I, I think this board could be that committee, basically, that we can put it on the agenda, have a meeting, discuss what our framework, decision-making framework would be, what our bright lines are, how we're going to approach these in the future. And then this board will be voting on it again in the future. We'll have all worked together to have made that decision. And this is clearly a topic that engages everybody in the room. So I think this committee could do that work, or this, this board, excuse me, could do that work.
Other comments?
I think for everybody that was in the room at the last joint board meeting, the conversation was incredibly thoughtful. So I don't want people to think that it wasn't. There's a lot of things that happened in non-public, obviously, that we can't share. But there wasn't a single person that wanted to sign the document. There were other considerations. I also think that we are in a difficult position because we are going to have to be reactive in what we don't want to be. I mean, these things come down literally days before. We don't know what they're going to say. We're coming up on what, assurances at the end of the month? And we don't know what will be in those. It probably won't be what we've always seen in the past, so. And I think that it really doesn't make sense to pull this to a committee. I mean, if we want to have community discussions and, and provide the community the opportunity to discuss with us how we feel and what, you know, what we're trying to do, I think that would be helpful. But I think pulling that decision-making away from this body and losing what we had at our last board meeting, which was incredibly thoughtful, I think that would be a mistake.
Some information?
Sure.
You, you do have an opportunity, you are ready, and we've done this in the past, particularly during COVID, when there was something that was very quick or decisions were trying to be made on a topic that was lengthier and we had more time and it wasn't a deadline to sign something, but it, but we needed to make decisions. We would have a joint chairs meeting and then those chairs would take that information back to their boards if it was appropriate, or then they would at least educate their board before we came together as a joint board. I would recommend that you keep that chairs, joint chairs committee as an option for something that may come up that you feel like, okay, we can discuss this and we want to bring it back to boards. We have three weeks to get it back to boards so that when we meet as a full joint board, we've had a little conversation at our local level, we've got a good feel for that. The only thing that makes me hesitant about a separate committee is that you'll have the same restraints because it's a board committee. You'll have to post, you'll have to vote, you'll have to have meetings, which is going to restrain that turnaround time if you're talking about something, you're trying to get information quickly or fast. It's a lot easier for me to pull, or for Chris, sorry, in this case, to pull joint chairs together and get a schedule that can work than 33 people. And then if legal needs to come in, we can have legal talk to joint chairs and then they can communicate out that information. So I would see that as a reasonable option to meet some of the needs you're all talking about as well as not being up against that restraint of it's a committee organized by a board which has the same quorum rules, et cetera, as any board meeting. So it is going to limit your availability to quickly organize versus joint chairs. There's no quorum, there's no rules you can't meet because they're all on a different board, but you all can go back to your boards. So I'd ask you to consider that when you're thinking about this.
Tim?
Tim Reed, Exeter. I agree that the conversations that happened, I won't get into specifics about what happened in non-public. Were very thoughtful and I do wish that some of those conversations could have been in the public session. I think for next time we have to go into non-public for a specific reason, I would say let's all try to get that non-public part out of the way and so that we can bring the conversation that can be back into the public, back into the public session. Because I think some of the comments and thoughts that were shared last month could have been in the public session and I think that could have helped the public understand what those conversations were that weren't specifically pertain to the reason why we went to non-public.
Okay, I'll do Jane and Sophie.
So I am on the same mind as like Heather and Tim, where what I heard from the public was they were disappointed in what they heard, but they understood. So that seems to me that we need to work on our communication to our community and communities individually. So I do like the idea of, in some way, shape or form, and I appreciate and I totally support the email that you sent out to everybody that was very thoughtful, but it sounded like we need a little bit more. We need just a little bit more communication from this board when these things happen and whatever that is, whether it's going to be a specific committee or if it's, whether it's going to be the chairs committee or if it's going to be this board, I think that's what the public was asking for, which is a little bit more explanation as to why we did what we did versus, you know, really understanding that a little bit more. So I think that just the communication needs to happen a little bit more, whether that's within, within the districts and get some creative thinking going. So that's kind of, I kind of really agreed with both you, you know, Heather and Tim on kind of your thinking in that regard, but I wanted to throw that communication piece back in there because that's what I think was the disconnect between us and the, and the public. Thanks.
First, I just want to say I apologize if any of my comments came across as I was being critical of the conversation y'all had or that there was a lack of thoughtfulness because that's not my intention. I, I wasn't there, but that's not where I'm coming from. I think y'all were incredibly thoughtful with the information you had and you made the best decision. It would have been the same if I would have been there too. So that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is maybe for the future, let's think through how to be more thoughtful, more prepared than what we had to face in the last time. And I'm not proposing a decision-making body, so I want to make sure that that's clear too. It would be probably a, what's the, hm?
Advisory?
Advisory, yeah. An advisory body or something along those lines. I, I think I like the chair idea for something that there needs to be a decision made in a really quick turnaround.
They couldn't make a decision either.
Oh, they, they couldn't do the decision either, okay. Yeah, so maybe this could be, my idea could be folded into a legislative, you know, committee. I'm definitely open to that.
Thanks, Eric. Eric, Mr. Adam. I just, is it possible that, so we're thinking about a legislative committee as Megan said, I don't, I didn't quite remember where we were at with that when we left. What about a legislative update as part of the agenda? As there, because I know in New Hampshire School Boards Association, we get it in like a digest. And it definitely comes with context from School Boards Association. Be interesting to have it, and I don't know if you have the resources for yet another presentation of somebody to go through that stuff and to present it to us, but I think, well, let me, let me just finish with kind of where I see that, is if we were able to see some of these things in advance, and I think the whole, the whole group, fine if it's a committee that then reads it out to the, to the district, but it's a committee that then reads it out to the district, but as a whole group, that'd be very helpful, and then it might give the public a little more time to be aware of what the legislative issues are, both state and federal, and they can participate better in the process, along with board members.
I'm not sure where we left things. I know there was some discussion about a legislative, I think it was, my understanding was more that there's going to have more legislative discussion as part of policy, but I could be wrong about that, but there's, I'm not quite sure where we left that in terms of a legislative committee, per se. I just, I'm just going to give my own two cents on a couple of things. One is that the thing that's really challenging about all this, and Melissa pointed to this, is the speed that these things are happening. I mean, typically, if you had a law that was coming forward, you'd have time to think about it, you might discuss it. There are tricks that they have with sliding them into other bills and whatnot, so you don't always have that discussion, but in theory, there's time to discuss this, but particularly some of the federal changes have been on very, very tight timelines of days instead of, you know, weeks and months to really anticipate what's going to happen, so it's really challenging. In terms of legislative update, we talked about this at our local school district in Exeter. The one we got from most recently, a couple of months ago now, but from the New Hampshire School Boards Association, I think they're tracking, it was like a 97-page document, and all these different potential ones, it's just to really, to be able to go through all of that, I'm not sure we could go through it all in three or four hours to really give it justice, to really discuss each of those individual things. It's, you know, it's pretty extensive, at least at the early stages, to go into that, but I, my understanding was that there was, that the committee, or, and maybe Esther can clarify, the committee or an SLT member was going to be tracking legislation a little bit more closely, and that we're going to have more discussion at our joint board. Is that right? Or maybe you can say more about that.
Sure, it was my impression that I sent out the email and the link for everyone through the School Boards Association, for you all at your discretion, and if you're interested in it or not, to look through. I've pushed out numerous times to the community in newsletters, to all of you as board members, how to track bills, how to put, give input to bills. I know I've given an update numerous times around the things that are on the radar, such as universal vouchers, the hunter safety piece just came up, we just talked about that. So the ones that have anticipated to perhaps have a financial impact, I've talked about pretty consistently. The issue is it's very hard to bring an, organize a group of people together and make decisions about what to do about it, because once the law passes, or the bill passes into law, it then goes to rules and regulations. We don't know what those rules and regulations are right now. So we know there's going to be some, very likely some universal voucher. There's four bills on the floor, which I've talked about numerous times with, since budget season, so since October and November, and that, once something comes out, then it goes to rules and regulations. For example, are, will boards be able to set their own policy around maximum classroom size? Will we have to go to school approval? We don't know that. Also, that right now, the bills are changing just about daily, the language in those bills, et cetera, so it's very difficult to give an accurate update, and that's why I ask you as board members, if that's something you feel like you want to bring up in a board meeting or something, you got to read the New Hampshire School Board Association, you got to go into the U.S. New Hampshire Gov. and access that information, because it's changing very regularly. There's Fast Democracy, which I've put out, which you can actually click and track bills, so if you're really interested in just universal, and you'll get your email on how that's changed that day, that week. I feel like I'm hearing you haven't been informed, and I got to say, I feel like I have informed people on a very regular basis on how to get that information, as well as what the ones are that we are fully aware may have an impact. I go to the legislative committee through the executive board for the New Hampshire School Administrators Association every week on Mondays at noon time, and then I'm on another committee to hear it every other week, things that maybe I'm not aware of. So when I get that information, I try to put it out as much as I can and bring it to boards. I know the other folks that have boards bring it to their school boards. The hottest topics, which we have talked about, are universal vouchers. We don't know how that's going to work. Hunter safety just came up, I think last week, as a non-German amendment. No one expected it. It wasn't even an educational bill, and so we get flagged when those things happen, and we try to pass those along, but the legislative is very quick in doing some things as legislators that maybe haven't been done in the past to get things, for example, putting the universal vouchers into the budget, HB2, right? So there are things that are happening that haven't happened in the past. We've tried to encourage folks to be advocates for whatever you believe in through that process, either signing, you know, and writing something, or physically going. We have to say, as an executive board group, are, got pretty discouraged about going and sitting there for three or four hours, and then going up and basically told, we've talked about this enough, we don't need to hear your opinion. Even some legislatures that we've met with, Tony Weinstein, et cetera, also helps us keep informed. She had a great presentation ready about universal vouchers and got up to do it at the hearing and was told, we've heard enough on this topic. So now, as a body, we are trying to focus on how do we support superintendents when we know what laws come out? How will that impact the policy? How do we bring that back to our boards? There are things that are proposed to be on warrant articles, such as proficiency scores and cost per student in your warrant article. That's just coming up. I don't know where that's going to end up. And so it's happened so fast, and then legal councils from all around the state, they look at all, everything that's passed, and we get a packet usually August that has all the laws that impact policy, and in the past, that's gone to Heather, and she's flagged those policies, and then that was the time that there was conversation at each board level in regards to the, to the legal changes that impacted policy. So we do have a pretty solid process when it impacts policy, and I anticipate that there will have to be some conversations once we get the rules and regulations with individual boards. Again, one board may decide to cap their class size at 20, another board may decide to cap it at 30. So that's the, that's the difficulty, because it is a local board decision, how to implement that. Only I can't tell you how it's going to come out, because I don't have the rules and regulations yet, and I don't know what's going to be passed into law. We do know there'll be a universal voucher. We fully anticipate that in some way, shape or form. We anticipate there'll be something around warrants and how those are posted and what information goes on that. We anticipate that the hunter safety will pass, that's under ought to pass, because it's slipped in another piece. We anticipate that those will be our major drivers right now about impacts for a budget, and it's hard to say how that will happen. The risk pool, I've talked about numerous times, that's another major impact we anticipate. So the items that we've anticipated that would have a major impact on budget, which is what boards do, right? Budgets and policy, that's the role, and so that's what we try to focus on, and things that are going to impact budget and policy. Those are the big four right now. How that's going to impact, I can't answer that until that gets passed and goes to rules and regulations.
So my understanding is that, particularly based on what Esther just said, is that we do not have a legislative committee, and we do not have immediate plans for a legislative committee. That would have to be something that would be proposed and understand what the purpose is, and the board would have to decide to adopt that sort of a committee. But it's not, it's just going to automatically happen. So.
Yes.
I understand we're still discussing the motion, so I want to.
Yeah, we should try to stay, I know it's varying pretty far straight, what we typically do to speak to the motion, and try to encourage people to speak to the motion, but I know sometimes people are making comments to say, we should do this instead, this is why I'm maybe not in favor of the motion, or I'm trying to understand the purpose of it. So it's a wide range of discussions, but try to speak to the motion to the extent that you can.
Okay. Trying to recraft what I was going to say. While I seconded the motion so we can have this discussion, to me, this discussion is making me feel like perhaps I might not necessarily support the motion the way it was initially presented, because what I'm hearing is there are a lot of alternative mechanisms to be able to get accomplished much of what Sophie and many of us are wanting to have as a result of this, one of which is, and this is a question, I love the idea of a joint, what's it called?
Joint chairs.
Chairs meeting, because what I would say is, this body meets, how many times? Four times a year, five times a year?
I think it's five.
Five. But not monthly.
No.
And our school boards meet monthly, and things happen regularly, rapidly, in the interim, and I almost, I'm not making a proposal within a proposal discussion, but I'm just wondering aloud if there is a role for there to be at the end of the month, before the next month resets, and Newfields, we're always like the first, I think, to have a board meeting, so I'm usually in the dark about, or one of the first. But it would be nice to have like, almost like a huddle of the chairs of the boards to say, hey, is there anything that we all might want to bring back to our board's knowledge that can potentially impact us, not making a decision as a joint, why can I think of that phrase? As a body, but having it be informing some questions that I might have that maybe all of us would have. For example, I experienced that this last month, the May board meeting about the general assurances. I had a lot of questions. I sort of wanted to talk to other people about it, and I have an excellent superintendent representation on there, so I had some good prep conversations, and we had, I think, a solid board meeting about it, but that's an example of, I think, something that could have been valuable if we had that structure, so. Sorry to keep talking about your, the motion, but I think.
We did have the joint chairs for nine years, I was on the board back in the nineties. Once a month, it worked great.
It was like a standard, that's great.
And we got once a month, and that was a fabulous.
I was going to say the same thing. Yeah, there's, there used to be a joint chairs meeting that was a monthly standard meeting, and then that group sort of dissolved and just had things more at the board level, and then it was reinstituted with some authority delegated to that group for a short period of time around COVID.
Sure.
And then the board as a whole felt like they didn't want to delegate that authority, and they wanted to bring it back to the individual boards, and so that group sort of dissolved again. But it could be, as Esther pointed out, it doesn't have any decision-making authority, but for information sharing and discussion, that's a potential mechanism. Other comments relative to the motion? Yes?
To speak to the motion, I do like, what I do like about Sophie's motion, I like this idea of the joint chairs, but what I also like about the motion is that there's sort of this opportunity to bring in Arlen and others who, to your point, Esther, you guys are, like, you have your finger on the pulse all the time, right? You're in it, and we are accountable to be paying attention to, absolutely, but I think you play a really important role in translating that to like what we have to make decisions around here, and so I wouldn't want to miss that piece. Like, if the joint, if the joint, if the chairs were meeting, I just want to lift up that piece of Sophie's motion around having input from the leadership team, and I'm just trying to work out in my head how that would happen, because we wouldn't necessarily, like, what I like about what you're saying is that there's a, like, we can both meet and bring it back here, but we can also the other way, like, I'm going to have a chairs meeting and talk to your board and say, is there something you want me to bring up, or inform something, you know, that we're going to discuss? So there's sort of that way to kind of have a feedback loop in both directions, but I just want to speak to the motion. What I like about it is that just input from you, the leadership team, and sort of translating and distilling the huge amount of information that we have to grapple with and make decisions around.
I'm just going to give other people a chance. I see, I see, Sophie. Anyone else would like to speak to the motion? I'll go back to Sophie then. Go ahead.
Okay. I'd also be interested in hearing other voices. I don't know if that's appropriate to hear. Okay.
It's not. It's a board discussion.
Okay. In that case, maybe another way of reconfiguring it is part of a communications committee, so instead of having a different mission, maybe it's more around communications with the public and then also within the board. That could be a different way of, then it's not so specific, could be broader, and it could, I think, like, we could be better about public communications in general. So that's another potential amendment that I could, I don't know, throughout there. I don't, I don't really know how to move forward, honestly.
That's fine. I'm going to suggest that we move forward by taking a vote on the motion, so I think that's the appropriate thing to do. We take a vote on the motion, if we want to have further discussion after that, we can decide to do that. So let's, you heard what the motion is, I can't repeat it word for word, but it was essentially, if I understood correctly, a motion to establish a committee that has a working name as a North Star Committee to discuss values and legislative issues that might have budgetary or policy impacts for our board, the mechanics of it could be worked out. That's what I had understood the motion to be roughly.
Yeah.
I know you, you had more descriptions to it.
No, that's great.
And that was seconded, so we have a motion, we're stopping discussion on it. Let's take a vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye, raise your hand, please. All those opposed? One abstention. Okay, so the motion doesn't pass. Is there further discussion about this topic? Yes.
If we want to meet as a chairs group, would you, would I have to make a motion to do that then? Or?
Establish one.
This is not a.
Establish a regular chairs meeting?
It's not a standing committee. It's not one that meets. Joint chairs doesn't meet.
Doesn't meet, but we, but it is a committee.
But I think that, right, I mean, it could be called, but it doesn't meet on a regular basis. Are you saying to propose that it meet on a monthly basis?
Yes, in some regular ca, yes, I'm trying, yes, I'm trying to figure out if I have to make a motion to propose that the chairs meet on a regular cadence to gather input and inform both board meetings.
We don't do that right now. We don't have a chairs meeting, or we don't have.
No, it's more like emergent.
It's more on a, it's more on an ad hoc emergency basis. We haven't, the joint chairs haven't met this year, for example.
Right, but I'm, I heard that they used to, so.
Correct.
Would I have to make a motion to?
Yes. Why don't you, why don't you make the motion?
Like a make the motion. What's that?
I was just, before we make another motion, can I just make a comment, because then we have to stick to that motion? I, like, 100%, right, this, this group is not going to meet again until the fall, right? Right? Like, that's, right?
That's right.
And legislation's happening, like, fast and furious, and we absolutely need to be able to react to it and plan for it. Like, I think personally, Esther, that the update that you gave us last meeting was exceptional, and I think that you gave us a lot of things to think about, a lot of things that, like, I've spent a lot of time thinking about, you know, from how do we protect our top 10, who are out here being celebrated today, right, to how do we protect our varsity athletes, and there's a lot of things there. And I, like, 100% believe that we should have a committee. I guess I personally, like, by dictating it be a chairs committee requires then our chairs to take on a second, whether they want it or not, or whether they're the best ones served to be on that committee. Whereas if we put, like, a legislative committee or something else out there, where, like, we can each pick somebody from our boards that has an interest or has the availability or, like, it just gives us as a board, individual local boards, a little bit more flexibility on who sits there. I do think it's really important, since we don't meet, that we put something together that can react over the summer. I just, I just, I'm not, I just wanted to say that before you put that out.
Well, so I agree with you, so I think we're trying to get to the same point.
Yeah.
And this motion got shot down, so I just am trying to figure out how we get to the point of being, having a sort of a steady way of staying informed and that, helping us inform our agendas, you know, for, at the local level, you know, our own, at our own board level, and then these conversations, that it's not just five times a year, and, yeah.
So I see three comments, I'm going to take them all. Melissa, Kirsten, Jane, go ahead.
So I could be completely wrong, but I don't believe that this board has ever voted to have a chair committee. It was always just a, it's an ad hoc kind of group. It's not a committee, you're not making decisions, it's not, you don't need the meeting minutes, agendas, that sort of thing, so I'm not sure that we need a motion to, I think, as a, you know, if the chairs would like to, or the chairs, you know, and I think to Allison's point, I think the chair could also appoint somebody else, you know, if they weren't that person.
Yeah, I mean, just to clarify how it worked in the past, I think that's right, you know, they had the, the chair of the joint board was on that committee, and then as a, really as a representative from each board. It could be the chair, it could be someone else. It's just that sometimes. could be someone else. It's just that sometimes vice chair, sometimes it was just a third member from the board. So they just had a representative from each board and it did meet on a monthly basis at one point in time.
I just, I guess for myself or anyone else, when legislation goes through and it becomes law, it then goes down to policy. And so I think one of the things that we have not talked about is the policy committee. That is the one that would be actually looking at the law that comes down. And so I really think, whereas I'm, I'm listening to this, one, I, I think the policies that have come through are astronomical, right? And they are doing, you know, they have to look at the law. They have no opinion on the law. The law has come down. And so each public person has the right to go and advocate for whatever side or whatever they think is right. But as this committee, having those conversations, it is crucial that we look at the policy and how it aligns to the values of the district. And that is where we have the ability to vote. Are we okay with the policy that the policy committee has written against the law or as the law is stated? And then does it align to the strategic plan and the core values that we have? As a legislative committee, all you're doing is looking at the law and interpreting the law. There's no vote there. It's already law. However, I do think there's a, a way to have the policy committee and maybe some more representation, like we're talking about, so that there is diverse understanding as to what's happening within the policy, that the policy is represented correctly at each and individual boards. We, you know, all of us get those big packets with policies and we're reading it out loud and we're saying, yes. But that's, for me, what I'm hearing is that legislation is, as individuals, we have the right to go advocate and Esther and SLT are going up there and advocating for certain pieces. But once the law is in rules and regs, we're going straight to policy. And so as much as I, I, I love the idea of talking about the law, we have to talk about how our policy is aligned to the values of the district. And so it goes down to the policy committee. And I, and I think Heather and her team have done a tremendous job, and it must be overwhelming at this point over the last six months. Maybe that's the space that we need to be looking at. So I'm just making that comment.
Jane?
You hit on the points already, so I'm good.
So maybe somebody that's on the policy committee can chime in on this because this has been a discussion at the Stratum Board. And what was just described about the policies, being able to modify state law to conform with the district's values, the discussion we've been having is that's not the case. And that regardless of whether it conflicts with our values or not, that the state law is the state law. And, and we've, we've been going back and forth on our own board about the same issue. So I, I just want to, maybe somebody else on the policy committee can clarify that, but it sounds to me like you cannot change the state laws. So there's really no discussion, like.
You can't. Well, let me just, yeah, I mean, I'm on the policy. I'll be one of the people that speaks on that. You cannot change the state law at the policy level. But there are, there are components of the policy that can reflect values. So you can provide more time for public input. You can't provide less than 30 minutes, but if you want to give each person five minutes and it's your values, you're gonna really value that to the extent that your board is committed to being there for an extra amount of time. You can, you have the authority to make that decision. It doesn't violate the law. You don't, you have to meet the minimum requirements. For the most part, as the district, we tend to have policies that are the same in every district. But there are times, because each individual district can make their own policy, where there's slight deviations. Where, where someone says, we want to provide more opportunity for another review of this or something else. But it can't conflict with the law. It can, you can provide additional rights or additional opportunities, but it can't be something that conflicts with the law.
Well, and I suspect, I mean, as these policies come up, this is gonna keep happening because this was the exact, one of the policy modifications that I objected to. And it was about something that was in law. And it was almost identical to the discussion we had last month about can we add some verbiage? Can we do this? And there's some liability. So I just think that there's, I'm not talking about adding verbiage to the law. I'm saying, like, as part of the policy, right? You could prescribe different verbiage and say, here's the letter of the law, right? And that's kind of the discussion we were having. So I just feel like it's, it's gonna keep coming up over and over again as we get these policies that clearly, like, conflict with our values.
I don't know where we are with things. There's some other comments. Heather already made a comment. I'll just give other people a chance before we go into this. I know Allison made a comment. Anyone else that hadn't made a comment about, I'm not sure where we are? We're sort of, it's sort of a follow-up to the motion that, that didn't pass. At some point, we need to move forward with our discussion because we have an agenda for the night. So it's not just an open forum for the evening.
Yeah.
But are there, is there any last sort of thoughts that people need to share before we move on?
I, well, I was asking whether I need to make a motion. And I guess one of the things, I just want to circle back. I do think it's different than the policy committee because where we started this conversation was an executive order where we were asked, I was not here, but the board was asked to go into non-public and make a decision in that moment around whether to sign something, right? So we actually did have a decision point. I absolutely know that it was a thoughtful conversation and a very difficult conversation. So I'm right there with Sophie that it's like my comments are not to undermine the thoughtfulness and, like, intention of this group. But my question is, is when we are asked to make a decision like that, how are we proactive in knowing what are the different decisions, what are the different options we have on the table before we go into non-public or to have time to sit with them or think about them before have, you know, and I know it wasn't a big turnaround. So there was that. Sort of when we are asked to make a decision, we had the decision not to sign, right? We had the decision to sign. There were probably some great, I don't, you know, there were some options on the table. And then to Tim's point, whatever is decided, what parts of that conversation can happen in a forum, right? What has to happen in non-public so that we have an opportunity to, to hear more perspectives on it before voting? And then also to the point that was made about, I think, Sophie, around communication, that we are thoughtful in terms of what we are able to communicate back out. So I think those are the pieces that I'm trying to tease out around when we do have decisions around executive orders or other things that affect our budget or our school policies. How do we make those decisions? How do we better prepare for the, for making those decisions? And is, and I guess what I'm wondering is, do we have to, if, if it's a group that meets responsively, like when we have, we know this is coming and we can call a small group together and whether it's the chairs or we nominate someone, I would be in favor of that. So that we can, we're gonna be, we're gonna have to make a decision. Let's call in some people who know about the decision, think about it, be able to have whatever discussion we have here in public and then go into non-public and work out the minutia. So that we're, so that, I guess I don't know how to make that motion or if I can make that motion or need to make that motion, but that's what I'm trying to understand.
Are folks, are folks generally in favor of trying to get the joint board, the joint chairs to meet on a more regular basis, even if there's not an emerging issue, just to sort of have a standing monthly meeting? Is that, do I get a sense, we don't need to take a vote, but is that something that people are generally in favor of? I see kind of a, a little bit of a mixed reaction. Go ahead.
I think the point made earlier that maybe, you know, board coordination, chair or designate.
Of course, yeah.
Because you're overloading the chairs.
Right.
Yeah.
Although Bill.
I think we call, I think we call it the joint chairs, but, but that, it better be just representative. Go ahead.
I anticipate there will be things to talk about. However, I'm looking at that team. I know how many meetings they have. And I'm looking at Chris's face. I want to be cognizant of expecting whoever on that team, it might be three of them. You might need Arlen, you might need Molly, you might need Chris. It might be curriculum, you're gonna bring in Jill. It might be, that's gonna impact special ed, so we want Renee and Ellen there. And, and so in our reality, most decisions are gonna involve that entire team because it's gonna impact a variety of pieces. So I hesitate to mandate they meet every month unless there's something that is needed to, just because that is one of the reasons it's so hard to call this joint board together. Because when I looked at the calendar, there wasn't one meeting to opt, that wasn't gonna conflict with another board meeting that was already happening. Therefore, that board wouldn't have been able to precipitate in that discussion if I tried to make it happen faster. And so I just want to make people cognizant. If you mandate another meeting a month and there isn't a topic that either has been ironed out or you need all those people at, it's going to be difficult to schedule because all of these people cover meetings two to three nights a week as it is. Just point of fact.
Okay. We're gonna take two more comments and we're gonna stop comments and move forward with the agenda. So Bobby and Sophie.
Thank you. So it's a question. Whose role is it to call these meetings? And if it's, if it's, well, do we know, who is, whose role is that? Because I think.
It's only been superintendent.
Superintendent. And how would one, like, if I wanted, if I had, if I as a chair felt that it would be a valuable exercise to have it month X, do I just email you or my superintendent rep and say, can we please consider having a board?
To do the joint chair.
Joint chair.
Representative, it would be the superintendent that you would email, not your designate, but superintendent.
Superintendent. And so I, I think that's important for the chairs to know because we need a mechanism for how to do it. I agree with what you're saying. I don't think it would be great to mandate every single person to meet every month. And then is there, my understanding was that it, even if it were, you know, called, not every person must attend because it's not like you need a quorum or anything like that. Is that correct?
Correct. There's not a quorum. You have a designate from each board.
There's no, there's no.
There's no decision.
They can't take a vote.
Right. So the way I see it, I don't see any downside to having a, a date and time saved for a space for a potential, you know, as a, or not even reserving it, but just knowing that there could be a drop-in, ad hoc, monthly touch point before the next month commences by, from some rep of the, of each board.
Right.
Because right now, there was, there's not. I understand you want to move on, Patrick, but right now, there's not. And like I said, I felt very, I really wanted to have a touch point before this passed Newfields School Board. And I, I felt supported, but I actually was frustrated that I felt like I didn't have another mechanism to having something where I can have a dialogue.
Yep.
And hearing what I now hear, I feel better about knowing what options are available to me. So I think this is a valuable discussion. I don't think, I don't want to make a motion about this, but it's valuable.
Last comment, Sophie.
Yeah. I guess to me, the chair committee does not meet the intention of what I proposed in the first place. So I'm not really in favor of that. I don't know if that would really touch on what I was bringing up in the first place. So I'm not sure. Like, I hear a lot of people say that there was value in the things that I was bringing up, but we haven't found a mechanism for which that's appropriate. And I know that we need to move on from this conversation and get on to the rest of the night. So I don't know how to move forward, really. I don't feel like my concerns were addressed. And I feel like a lot of us have those concerns in this room that are still not addressed and figuring out how to have that conversation. How, how do we be more prepared for things like this that come down the pike? What, what do we do? If it's not a committee, what is it?
We're cutting off, we're cutting off commentary. So I'm not gonna continue the conversation. What I, what I'd say, Sophie, is just generally, is the mechanism that we have as a board is to make a motion to allow discussion. We had a lot of opportunity for discussion and to decide on that motion. There's space to make additional motions. The board didn't make additional motions. We need to move forward with the agenda. We've already taken over an hour to discuss something that wasn't on the agenda. So it's certainly something that could be put on the agenda in the future, if that's something that you'd like to address. And I'll also say, a lot of these issues can be discussed at the district level, that certainly individual districts can be discussing these things, including the issue of the assurances. I mean, we had, Heather made some reference to that. We discussed it at our board level about what we might do in the future. And, you know, encourage folks to continue these discussions at their individual boards. But I'm gonna move forward with the agenda instead of, instead of keeping this open for just, you know, sort of an open forum, okay? So let's move on. But thank you for all the commentary because I did think it was very useful to have the time for, to have this discussion. We have minutes that are in here. We have public minutes and non-public minutes from April 21st that we need to make a motion to approve or amend, depending on what folks saw. I was not there, so I'm not in a position to make a motion either way.
I'll make a motion to, to accept the meeting minutes, all three, the public and both non-public.
Okay. So we have a motion. Do we have a second for the motion? Do we have a second? Okay. Any discussion on any of the, any of the sets of minutes? Okay. Then let's take a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40.
All those opposed? And any abstentions?
21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40.
Okay. All right. Next, we have the SAU administrative report. I'll turn things up to you.
Down to 20, but I don't think you, uh. Thanks. So I would like to, I have put Allison Bryant's resume in front of all of you. She is our newest incoming member as of July 1 to this incredible SAU team. Making me replemed. Sorry. I didn't expect that. So Allison, I asked you to say a few words about how awesome you are and how we're excited that you're joining the team.
Good evening. Thank you. I am Allison Bryant. I am really thrilled to be here. I had the opportunity to, I've had the opportunity in the last couple of years to get to know this SLT a little bit through southeastern meetings and conferences and things like that. And from, from the first time I met them, I knew it was a team that was special and dedicated and competent. And so to have an opportunity to join this team really is a privilege. And I'm really looking forward to serving this community. I've been in Rochester for the past two years as the assistant superintendent. And prior to that, I was a middle school principal for seven years. I was a curriculum coordinator before that. Before that, I was an English teacher and I started my career as a paraprofessional. So I've had an opportunity to kind of walk in, in many shoes in the school district and enjoyed every single one. Probably most importantly, I'm also a mom of a middle schooler. And so your conversation this evening was really enticing. And as I think about being a mom and what, what grading means and how important it is to give a clear picture of where our students are at, that, that hit home a little bit. So I appreciated that conversation. And again, thank you very much for the opportunity to join this team. I'm really looking forward to July 1.
Thanks, Allison. I think we're good unless anyone has any specific questions for Allison at this point. Moving on, Chris, can I ask you to just do the slideshow? It's brief. I just felt like I should have something more than what was in the quarterly report. So just to remind people, that's our graduate portrait. You will see Ibis public section. That was the sector, that was the group we worked with for strategic planning. So they're on the slides also to recognize their efforts and work. Next slide, Chris. As you see in your quarterly newsletter, these are where the core values landed. And it was already mentioned tonight that we had a large group, really most, all three days, we had at least 60 people and sometimes that fluctuated up to 70 community members, which included administrators, teachers, parents, and SLT and board members. So thank you to those that were able to make that three half-days. As you can see here, I do want to point out with the conversations we've had tonight, our core values are well-aligned. We've talked about equity. We've talked about academic excellence. We've talked about well-being. Growth mindset obviously relates to that academic excellence piece. And then belonging and connection relates to the equity and the well-being. So these core values seem aligned with what the public, we've been getting input on, as well as came out of that summit. Based on that, our next step was to come out with strategic priority areas. This was done during those three half-days also. So this is community and driven from that summit. As you can see, thriving learners, empowered and supported educators, engaged community and strong partnerships. I think, Sophie, this speaks to some of what we talked about tonight. So I'm hopeful that with these strategic priority areas, we're gonna get at some of the conversations that were, we talked about tonight. Next slide. Thanks, Chris. So as you can see, our next step in our steering committee has been working on this. We come up with theories of action for each one of those strategic priority areas. So it's basically just taking that language and reshaping it so we know what we're looking for. If we have, if we want to have equity, then we need to do this. So what's the action step? So those have been developed for those four areas. And then next slide, Chris. Our next step is the key performance indicators. Our steering committee has gotten through one area so far. We meet on Thursday to do the other three areas. And that is actually identifying, how are we gonna measure this? How are we gonna measure our theory of action? And that's always, always gonna be critical to a strategic plan and hold us accountable as community members and board members and all of the educators to making that theory of action real. So we're working to identify different priority performance indicators. And that will lead to, next slide, Chris. Next slide. This is a sample scorecard. So this is what will be live to the public and all of you. And that will get updated as to whatever that as to whatever that committee decides quarterly, twice a year. So all those performance indicators will have clear measurements, and those will be reported out. So you can see at Franklin Public School, they had their four areas, one of them being engagement. They identified how they were going to measure that, and then they reported out, they used percentages. So that's what the steering committee is working through, so then that scorecard can be developed. And then at the admin retreat this summer, Chris and the team will work with looking at those indicators and how our school is going to implement those, what action steps will they take at each district to make that relate back to those performance indicators? And then it'll come after the administrators work on it at the retreat, it'll come back to that committee, and then they will go to boards for updates, et cetera. So one more slide, Chris. That's the next steps, the steering committee and the leadership retreat. And so that was a quick overview. I'm excited about having that active scorecard. I think that will hold people really accountable, as well as be a very good communicator on how we're doing. It isn't just something that we did and got put on a shelf. So we'll have, keep talking about that. I anticipate that you'll all get strategic planning updates, at least quarterly, through that scorecard, as well as through the quarterly newsletter, our other venues that the team kind of moves forward with. The steering committee may decide that they have a certain kind of way that they want to make sure that boards stay informed and that community members stay informed. So the work all the way up through the report card will be done, which is what we plan to and what we contracted for with IBIS. And then Chris and the team and the steering committee take it through the next steps. So happy to report, we achieved the goal of getting where we were supposed to be. We will, at least by Thursday night, and then you'll see that scorecard draft next fall. It'll be made, but we won't meet again to show it. So that's kind of where it's at. Any questions?
I do have one question. Was there anything in the, I don't know what they were called, like tactics or strategies that relate to the board, that, things that they were, that were recommended in terms of actions we should be taking, or ways that, things that we should be doing to, you know, to, to meet the goals that were identified?
Yeah, I think that engaged community and strong partnerships is probably the best place or the most logical place that those things will fit. And as we start to think of KPIs or those performance indicators, is there a way that we want to somehow increase communication around board decisions and things like that? I mean, we have it on the web, we have lots of places, are there more ideas to do that? So that would be something we would look to. That steering committee, which has board members on it from all the districts represented, could take back to the boards and say, hey, we're wondering about this, we're kicking this idea around, do you guys have any input as a board in this particular priority area? Or any of them? So that will kind of, I think, happen naturally as we progress through the process. Any other questions? Thanks, guys, I appreciate you listening to me.
Okay. Next, we have SAU 16 committees, and we have the superintendent evaluation committee.
Yeah, so we finished the evaluation. Just a refresher that it is a three-part evaluation. There's a 360 evaluation, where 72 potential participants were sent out a form that was developed that we've used the past couple of years. We got a 42% participation rate this year, which is a little bit lower than last year. We did keep it open for an extra week or two to try to get some more participants. And like, you know, in general, all of the measures went up. For the performance measures, so there's like four, three foundational or focus areas, foundational disposition. Of the seven key indicators under there, 83% of participants rated the superintendent performance as effective or accomplished. That was up from 70% last year. Focus area two, which is future work skills and disposition, five indicators, 77% of the participants rated the performance of the superintendent as, as effective or accomplished, up from 75 last year. And then focused area three is leadership skills and attributes, and there's four key indicators, and 86% of participants rated as effective or accomplished, up from 60 last year. So like overwhelmingly positive growth. I would say that the growth areas are, you know, it's all relative, because everything was improved. But the growth areas are generally still the same as they were last year. And, you know, what we did was, so that's the 360. We took the feedback from all of the boards and summarized it into commendations and growth areas. Obviously, as we see the strategic plan was met, you know, and we have some feedback on like, sort of where we would like to see it go, as far as like reporting, which you've just told us we're going to get. And so that's really like, kind of the highlights. I talked to Dr. Aswell today, and last year she had asked for like a public presentation as she's retiring that wasn't necessary, and the fact that it's eight o'clock already, even more so. But we'll send this to her, and the boards, I mean, the reps have it. I couldn't remember who you guys said, I put you on it, okay. And then we'll meet with Chris to set goals for next year. So that's, it's complete, I guess, the moral of the story. I don't know if Bill or anybody else wants to add anything. The overwhelming sentiments were that everybody wanted Dr. Aswell to enjoy a well-earned retirement. Those were like the overwhelming sentiments in the comments, quite honestly. So, and I think that that is our sentiments, too.
Perfect, I was just going to say that, perfectly put. And, and thank you to you and Heather for doing all the work, taking all of our thoughts, putting it together, and leading the charge and doing the survey. And you too, Heather, yes, and Allison, so thank you.
All right. Well done, we'll move forward again. So next up is new business. I'm not aware of any new business, we sort of handled some new business relative to the public comments. We don't have a non-public session, so before we adjourn, let me just say this, on, on our agenda is just listed, future meeting dates as to be determined. I'll make a point of connecting with Chris, and we can come up with a list of dates to get that out to you before, before next month, so that people can be planning ahead for next year on what the dates are. Yes?
New business, just a question. I thought I remember last year we had a student rep on this board, did that go away? Or did the, we just don't have a, is there?
Student reps on the co-op board, is that what you're thinking of?
No.
I remember there being a student rep.
Oh, I think it was the, maybe the co-op rep that came.
Okay.
Yep. And this year's rep is very sports-involved, and so getting them to come to a meeting is tough this time of, this time of day. Yes, yeah.
Can I also just ask a question? I've heard some conflicting feedback from my children on what the last day of school is. While we're all here...
It is tomorrow for your kids, Allison.
Could we clarify? Like, I did look at the calendar, and it still says it's the 13th. Is that in fact true?
Let me check, I believe the last day, is that the Friday, Friday the 13th? Yes.
Okay, yeah, so they were like, no, no, it's the 12th.
Kids are done on Friday.
I think there are some schools that have half-days, some elementary schools have half-days, but every, every school has 13th as the last day.
Thank you.
Thank you for everyone's patience and the participation tonight, and being respectful of one another, and we're going to adjourn this meeting and look out for the dates for future meeting dates. Okay, thanks. We're done.
Second to the adjournment.
Thank you.
Without a motion, we're just adjourned.